Good afternoon. Welcome to the special meeting of Glendale City Council on May 3rd, beginning at 3:05. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Sinayan.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. Report, please.
The agenda for the May 3rd, 2016 special public meeting of the city council was posted on Friday, April 29th, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item.
Director of Finance regarding third quarter financial report, 1A motion to note and file the fiscal year 2015-16 third quarter financial report for the period ended March 31st, 2016.
Thank you. Mr. Toa, do we go directly to Mr. Elliott?
We very well may. Are you ready, Bob?
Yes.
Got our presentation upcoming. As Bob pulls up the PowerPoint, it's just that magical time of year again where we commence the budget adoption process. And so this is the first of three budget study sessions that will lead to a budget hearing, we hope and expect, on the evening of May the 24th, and hopefully an adoption on June the 14th. So with that, we'll start off with the general fund. Bob?
Thanks, Scott. Before we get started, I wanted to thank all the staff in this room, and particularly the budget staff, who put literally thousands of hours into preparation for this year's budget. As we get started, I want to go through, we'll do the 15-16 third quarter update, and then we'll dive into the 16-17, and go through the high level proposed for general fund and some of the other organizational items. So going into the, this current year, 15-16's general fund, third quarter report, our revenues are doing very well, and a little bit ahead of where we were last year, and I'll show you all the detail of that in a minute. Expenditures are a little bit down from where they were last year, a little less than a percent, but still tracking where we'd expect. All the departments outside of our safety department should come in under budget. The safety department should be a little bit over because of overtime.
And by a little bit over, we're talking a 1% or 2% as we finish off the, if that, as we finish off the year. What we're seeing is extraordinary on the fire side. The number of calls, we probably will top 20,000 calls for service for the first time ever, as City of Glendale and Glendale Fire Department. And we've also seen a tremendous amount of strike teams that we've been sending our crews on as part of the master mutual aid. We do get reimbursed for strike team, but there is kind of a halo effect from the amount of time that people are working while other personnel are off in the field. And of course, as you know, what the council's heard a great deal about this, you've prioritized in terms of the police department, trying to make sure that we are out and present as we combat the pressures from AB 109 and AB, or Prop 47, as well as a sustained push on traffic calming and pedestrian safety. So we're seeing improvements. That's the good news, and we're making some good arrests when it comes to the presumably nonviolent, nonsexual, nonserious offenders that were let out under AB 109, but it has come at an expense, and you're seeing that in these two departments.
Going into the revenues, detail for general fund, as you see down here, we're about 54.1%. That's about where we expect to be during this part of the year. Property tax comes in two big chunks during the year, once in, one in December and one in April, so this doesn't show the second large payment of property tax, but it's where we would expect we should be this time of year.
Okay, that was going to be one of my questions, as to how do we make up the 46% that's, you know, we should be, I would think we should be at 75, but I guess that's...
Yeah, no, the revenues are not straight line. We get big chunks of revenues.
Property tax comes in twice a year.
And we get two large sales tax payments out in July and August, and a cleanup. So it's very skewed towards the end of the year.
Yeah, don't let the number worry you just yet.
No, we're good on revenues. Looking at expenditures, as I mentioned, this year, this quarter through third quarter, we're 72.6% expended. Last year, we were about 73.5 at this point of the year, so we're actually a little bit ahead of this year in terms of spending less by department. Again, as you straight line, if, we typically spend fairly straight line outside of perhaps community service and parks that have a lot of cost front loaded in during the year. But by this time of year, we would expect to be at least 75% or less in all our departments.
I have another question. Can I?
Sure.
Butt in? I'm sorry, I'm terrified. Then I'll be done, I think. On the adjustments, on the, on page four, it's 5.3 million, and then when we go to page five, for adjustments, it's 2.214. Where's, there's, that's a $3 million difference, and I'm just wondering...
You're looking at 15-16 adjustments?
Correct. Correct. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm going back to the different slides.
I thought that's where we were up there. General fund expenditures. So it's 5.3?
Yes, and that includes, and I'll break that down for you in a minute.
Okay.
That includes our adjustments for this year, plus carryovers from prior year. And I'll give you all the detail then in a second.
That'll explain why it's not in agreement, it's inconsistent on the next...
Yeah, it will add up to the 5.3. They wouldn't let me out the door with something that was off, trust me.
Good for you.
Okay, so, walking through the detail of how we got to where we are for the third quarter, our total revenues, again, what we expect to get would be $187 million. This figure here, we've adjusted up about 1.5 million. On our total appropriations, we started the year at 182 million. We've added adjustments through the year of 2.2 million, the 2.2 million right here, if I can get the mouse to work. You know, that had the gain share in it, some of the citizen polling that we did, the election costs, and some of the other adjustments that we did throughout the year. Focusing on just this year, that would get us to 185. That would, we would expect to have projected surplus of about $2 million based on that, but through our projections, we would expect to have another $364,000 in savings. That would give us reserves at the end of the year of about $68.4 million. From that, I would take the carryover appropriations of 3.1 million.
That's 3.1.
And that, if you add that 2.2 and that 3.1, that gets you the 5.3. So what we're projecting towards the end of the year for our total fund balance for general fund would be 65.3 million, still at 35.7%. And again, our floor is 30%, and our target is 35, so we're exceeding the actual target.
And it's probably worth noting that, as you recall, we adopted this budget this year anticipating a 2 point, I believe, 2.7 million surplus that was adjusted to about 2.4, 2.5 at mid-year, so we're hitting that number, knowing that we would start the next year within the equivalent deficit.
So again, this is our forecast. We redo this every quarter. We've actually changed it now, based off, when we had the goal-setting session, the amounts you see here are total amounts, and not just incremental. So when you look at the PERS net cost, where we are today at 23.1, and it works its way out to 21.22, where it grows to 34.9%.
So as the, as the council has asked from time to time, you know, the sustainability of that commitment, we have talked about making sure that we stay in that sweet spot of trying to keep that PERS cost below 18%. Even as you look out to those out-years of '21 and '22, we're about 15.95, almost 16%, but we never cross over into that danger zone of 18, 19. You saw Stockton, San Bernardino, San Jose, those cities that were in crisis, oftentimes getting well in excess of 20%. So our goal has been through cost sharing and managing the personnel costs of keeping that below the 17%. And I think you see that, as council directors, Bob indicated, you didn't want to see just the incremental cost, you wanted to see the actual annual general fund cost.
Some of the items that we've highlighted here are internal service funds. Those are funds that we operate like businesses for ourselves. We have, again, insurance, our medical funds, our workers' compensation funds, and this shows some of the increases in those funds as we work through the forecast. The COPs, that's the debt we have outstanding on the police building. We have a little bit of a shortfall, and we'll be bringing a renewal back to you in a few weeks for that debt on the police building, but that's increasing our contribution back to make that debt service back to the debt service fund.
Question, why are these, I mean, is there a difference between COP and bond?
It's a different instrument. We actually converted the certificates of participation, there, it's now a direct purchase with Bank of America, so it's a floating interest rate, direct loan with Bank of America at this point. They originally were certificates of participation, we just kept the name. But bonds are typically longer term, 30 years, with fixed rates, where these were originally variable rates that reset every week. The current status is it resets every month based off of LIBOR index, so it still floats, but it's only monthly.
Would we not want to lock in the relatively low rates that we have currently, then keep it floating?
We could, and we've looked at that. The problem is, on fixed rates, would still be well over 2%, and the current rate we're paying is just over 1, when we add in what we're doing on the variables. So it would be a big jump in debt service cost if we switch to a fixed rate. We've looked at that, but it just doesn't seem to make sense at this point.
How much further do we have? How many more years?
We have 14 more years.
We're going to hold our breath.
Yeah.
So...
I wish I, I wish we could take it back.
A few more years, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So at the end of 15-16, again, we're showing that 2.4 million surplus. As we've shown, as we move into 16-17, we'll have a slight deficit this year. That turns around in the forecast on 17-18, and gets positive and remains positive throughout the forecast. This adjusts every quarter, as I've said. We take things into account. If something happens to one of the revenue resources, we will take a look at our expenditures and dial down accordingly. The whole focus on this is managing within our, within our means long-term. Something we do every quarter is update you on where we are in cash. That was a big topic several years ago, with particularly Glendale Water and Power. As you can see now, the electric fund has well over $100 million in operating cash.
I'm sorry, Bob, how much?
Well over $100 million.
Well over $100 million, huh? That's amazing.
The water fund, which at one point was almost $24 million negative, is almost back to zero. So we're making progress there, and we'll be positive hopefully by the end of this year. Total cash within the city is $654 million as of the end of the third quarter. So jumping right into the 16-17 proposed budget, what we've done in the past, and we're continuing to do, we take our revised 15-16 budget on our proposed resources, and then we'll highlight all the changes in the resources, taxes, et cetera, for you. Our property tax has a nice increase of 4.8%, excuse me, 4.8 million. It's over 9%, and that's just based off the trend and some of the things that we know are going to happen in terms of property tax. Sales tax is strong, we're revising that estimate up about $1,005,000. Utility users' tax is up, $495,000. TOT is up, and that's primarily because the rate went up from 10% to 12%, so there's more hotel tax being generated. With that, we've adjusted our cost allocation. That's what the general fund charges non-general fund departments for central support services, and it's two years in arrears in terms of how we use that data. So because we've reduced the number of staff, that cost allocation amount is down for this year, but it factors through, throughout the budget as well. So a reduction in 16-17 from what we would expect the GRA loan payment to be, and then all our other changes in the different revenues, some are up and some are down, the net reduction about $812,000, for a total increase of 5.7 million in revenues for a grand total of $192,857.
And understanding that the GRA loan repayment's a function of the formula that DOF uses to repay the available funds that would come back to City of Glendale. So while we won in court, thanks to the great work of our city attorney's office and the successor agency staff, that total amount will come back to us, and we think actually, pending on when we get the first payment from the state under the new formula, this number here could change, it's just a function of when we get that money and what fiscal year do we book it to. But we will be in for the full amount, the full 42 to 45 million dollars.
One other thing to note is, and you'll see down here, use of assigned economic development fund balance. What happened was, we'd originally set up the economic development function in a separate fund, and as a special revenue fund, and we tried, we went through the, through the budget with it that way, the auditors came in and said, really doesn't qualify as a special revenue fund. So for last year, we scooped it all back into the general fund and reported on it that way, and we took its activity and earmarked it within the fund balance of the general fund. So we basically pulled out about $3.5 million. So we're appropriating that, the entire function has been moved back to the general fund, and you'll see some of those personnel shifts as we walk through the differences from last year to this year. But that's appropriating that fund balance, and that gives us total resources of $193.7 So again, looking at the revenue changes, we had some strong activity. Again, the property tax is up 9.8, the sales tax is about 4%, occupancy is up the 12.1. So overall, we're, the total revenue growth in the general fund with all different revenues is about 3.1%.
Considered successful. Any change or 3.1%?
Well, we had years where we were, had negatives, so 3.1% is pretty good.
Okay, great, all right.
Actually, this is probably the first year we haven't cut since I've been here, so pretty good.
Be quiet, Bob.
Yeah, I know.
Don't want to jinx it.
Don't jinx it. Moving on to the appropriations, again, kind of the same exercise, we take the starting budget from the prior year, highlight all the different variances that are factored in, and we'll go through all the details, but as you can see, there's salaring benefits along with, you know, other types of benefits with the medical dental vision. That gets us a $4.8 million increase. This is, again, coming from the Economic Development Department, the 723, out of that reserved.
And it's probably worth noting, before you move beyond the other benefits, the medical dental vision, the medical in particular, this amount, you recall the very difficult decision that the council undertook to unblend rates as a means of addressing our OPEB liability, well, that did lower the cost for medical that the city is liable for with our employees. This step, this $120,000 that you see, while an increase, is about $830,000 less than it otherwise would have been. So the decision made by the council results in $830,000 worth of ongoing savings that gets dialed back into the, into the overall organization.
So some of the other changes we've had in terms of, we reduced the liability insurance charge, that's again, the kind of our own internal insurance fund that we have to pay out our claims. We have our own fleet operations, we lowered the rate this year that the general fund is paying to fleet. ISD charges went up a little bit, and that's primarily because of radio, the way the radios were allocated, so a bigger chunk comes back to the general fund. And then we had different changes in our M&amp;O, which were 5.3 million, and I'll walk through all the detail of that. So at the end of the day, we come down with proposed $194 million, plus the 920 that we're taking out of the economic development fund balance for total appropriations of $194.9 million. So diving into some of the nitty-gritty on the salaring benefits, as you recall, we had cost of living adjustments for both GMA and GCA, we've built that into the budget. Again, that's offset by a 1% increase in cost sharing on PERS.
So you give the association a 3% increase, they turn around and give 1% right back by way of cost sharing?
Right.
And you see the impact when you look at that five-year forecast of how that does in real terms, lower what our PERS liability incurred is?
So that 5.5 million is the 2% or the 3%? That cost sharing that is being paid back by the employees, basically, is it calculated into that 5.5 million?
That's the new cost, yes.
That's the new, yes. That's impact.
That's not the 3%, that's the 2%, which is 5.5 million?
Well, it's a 3% cost of living increase, offset by 1% give back on PERS, so it's not exactly 2% net, but, because there's other factors in there, but roughly speaking, yes.
Other factors like what?
Well, other payroll-related taxes that we have to factor on, so it's not, it's a little bit more than 2%, but the PERS offset is increased from 11% to 12%, which is still higher than any city I know. So we increased, as you recall, our workers' comp fund. We've been trying to work that out of a hole for many years. It still has a $14 million deficit, so we've increased the rates that we're charging the various departments significantly, and hopefully we'll have that fund back to zero by another five years, but it's a slow process. Unfortunately, I think claims, the claim numbers are staying constant, but the costs per claims are going up, so we're working on that one. And kind of a new thing is, probably the first time since I've been here, we have a little bit of program restoration, coming back to the general fund, we'll walk through all the details of that. And then we had part of that economic development, there's $724,000 in there for wages and benefits, and I'll show you the detail.
And on these, I think there's a couple of key takeaways for us. I mean, the council's adopted principles of compensation management, where we continue to beat that drumbeat of we shall pay the average, starts to pay, it starts to bear fruit when we get to a period of time where we aren't constantly cutting. If, all things being equal, you know, knock on wood, we see the economy staying steady, not necessarily growing robustly, but staying steady. And to the extent that we don't begin the year with cuts, everybody begins to say, well, I'd like a little more, please. What that invariably results in is increases at the negotiating table. So to the extent that the city has endeavored to hold true to the idea that we will pay average, even in those bad times, then it's also true that we will endeavor to pay average even in the good times. So the idea being that even as you look at the marketplace, our goal, your policy, has been that we will demand exceptional talent for average wages, and being Glendale, we believe that we can attract that talent and we can provide that level of service. You see other cities that are boastful of willing and wanting to increase above average and marketing themselves as such, and we do compete with them, but we think that as an organization, we have much more to offer. In terms of, a couple other things to take away here, the workers' comp fund, we do expect to amortize that deficit over the next five years, but to the extent that the council believes that, you know, we can, you give us the direction, we call a shot and then go hit that shot, you'll recall that the liability fund was at one point in the negative, and we steadfastly focused on shoring that fund up. Now that fund is fine, such that we're reducing the contribution from the general fund to the liability fund. So we have every expectation that we can continue to work that way on the workers' comp fund, bring that back into the positive, and you'll see in some of our departments, especially the public safety departments, their workers' comp claims, the losses that they're realizing are stabilizing and going down. The last bit is just that, that $724,000, you'll recall last year when Phil Landsafame moved into Community Development Department, he brought with him some toys by way of economic development, the idea of bringing money for hourly staff, not necessarily full-time staff, but hourly staff, to help us handle the glut of work that's moving through his department, now his department, and such that we are taking building safety timeline from 16 weeks to the issuance of permits down to 10 weeks, for planning from 120 days down to 100 days. And as we continue to fill the only remaining, handful of remaining vacant positions in that department, you'll see those numbers begin to improve even further still. So the takeaway, I think, is the council is saying, we want to see these things, and then through the course of the year, you are having that level of achievement through those departments. So it's actually very invigorating.
Looking at the detailed increase on the M&amp;O, it's primarily two large items. I mentioned the 800-plus thousand on the ISD charge, that's the allocation for radio costs. As we spoke, the 1.1 million, and that's the economic development staff shifting back to the general fund, so we're adding that back and the costs involved there. We shifted the building maintenance folks out of the general fund, but created an internal service fund this year, which will then have a much more scientific, for lack of a better description, way of charging out the cost for building maintenance. So that's coming back to the general fund in maintenance and operations, but was offset by salaring benefit reductions in the general fund. So those two items are structural shifts within the general fund. We also had increases in our, in our election budget, and then some $100,000 for printers in the graphics department.
So the economic development shifting from, to general fund, why are we shifting, and where is it coming from?
It was in Fund 215.
This was the old Economic Development Corporation, so we had it set up as a separate political entity. The auditors are saying, really doesn't qualify as a separate revenue fund, so we're taking the money that was already there, that came from the dissolution of redevelopment that we parked there, that 1.1 million, taking that, putting it into the general fund, but earmarking it as economic development funding. So that way, it just doesn't get lost in the wash of the general fund.
So this is going to be spent...
For economic development purposes, yes.
Correct. It's just a section within the general fund.
Just taking it out of what will collapse as a economic development fund, put it in there, so when you say, we want to pursue a project here, there, the other place, we have funding to do that.
So our economic development agency doesn't have any account at this point, doesn't have any funds in their account?
It's a department inside of the general fund, like the police department, or the fire department, or my department, or any other departments inside the general fund.
Got it.
And it's all tracked individually.
And I think you were going to explain the program restoration? That's not the 1.7 million?
Yeah, that's coming.
Are you going to get to that?
That's coming.
And, like, I'm sorry, the election budget is money that we spent for conducting elections?
Correct.
And why is that going up?
I guess it's the cost of the measure and election, paying the county to convene that election.
Total cost, I don't know what the total is, but that's what was in the budget.
It'll be a little more than that when you do all the education components, so probably about 221.
Okay, thanks.
So the increase in transfers and capital outlay of 907,000, as I spoke earlier, the 300, we're increasing the contribution to the debt service fund for the COPs, $300,000. We're increasing 1.1 million out to the capital improvement fund, CIP fund for street projects. That was a kind of a big deal, trying to squeeze that money. And just some other minor changes, another 14,000 for nutritional meals, and so on and so forth.
So the idea that we have the pavement management index come back, we know that we need to put in excess of a million dollars to maintain that pavement management index to where Glendale standards are, so money that is available, instead of putting it towards other things, that certainly there are other demands for, we're asking and recommending that you put it into pavement management, you put it into the infrastructure that the residents see. And then I just want to be really clear that the $184,000 decrease is a function of the formula, the money that's coming back to the redevelopment agency right now at this time, the residual that is coming to City of Glendale. As that amount ebbs and flows, you'll see the commitment to affordable housing through that, that revenue flow kind of ebb and flow with it. This does not include the bond money, this doesn't include the redevelopment DOF loan money that we recently won. So, you know, while this shows a reduction, overall, you will see... a reduction, overall, you will see, at least for a short period of time, a very significant infusion of cash into the affordable housing program.
Proposed restorations. I think this is what we're waiting. So the total is about $2.5 million. Broken down personnel account for about 1.7 million of that. There's one additional position being requested to add back for the One Glendale After-School Parks Sports Program in Community Service and Parks Department. And that cost is about $60,000. Reallocating 26 positions, and this is a variety of personnel moves throughout the general fund, and that, the costing on that is $206,000.
This ranges from permit service technicians, code compliance officers, office service supervisors moving into building collections, groundskeepers, and only a handful of, actually, I think only one management position, the rest are all line employees.
Are they hourly or full-time?
These are full-time, currently existing staff.
Currently existing staff. So we're not, I'm concerned that, you know, we've done all of these layoffs, and now we're proposing additional 2 million for, or 1.7 million for additional personnel. I mean, are we, we're going to kind of, there's going to still be a balance?
Surely, no, that's a great question.
Yeah, I'm not going to press, get back to where we were when we did all of that.
You're absolutely right, and that's something we wrestle with tremendously. You'll see, as we get into the organizational profile, we are at 1579 full-time equivalent positions proposed for the coming year. You've heard me say, "I really don't see us getting back to the other side of 1600," certainly unless we took on some new line of business that we aren't in today. And even of the difference between 1579, those 21 positions probably would be earmarked for public safety at this point. There are needs, smaller needs, in different places of the organization that we probably can fill through attrition. The point being, to your question, that we are keeping a very close eye on personnel growth. And so what you see here, for example, of that 1.7 million, the largest share of that, the personnel shifts, are really movements of people from different parts of the organization back into the general fund. In terms of an increase in the cost of our people, it's relatively small. You have the reallocations, which really are functions of people that are doing different jobs that then necessitate a change in their title, and thus a change in their salary. But it's $7,900 on average for those 26 positions. You will see us do more with hourlies. That's not at the denigration of full-time positions, but where we can work with hourlies, like you're seeing in community development, if we know that the, we kind of compare it to a snake that's eaten a pig, and, you know, that pig's going to work its way through the snake at some point. Well, when the pig is fully digested, we don't want to have a bunch of, a big old giant snake. We don't want to have too many employees, because we'll get back to that point that you're, that dynamic you're describing.
That's a picture I don't like to keep.
That's it. You can blame Phil for that. But so we do work with hourlies. And so you'll see, it's one position in community services, the reallocation of existing bodies that are part of that 1579, augmentation using the hourly folks, and then the personnel shifts, this is the movement of code enforcement, all of the existing bodies back into the general fund, the movement of police officers, where grant funding has shifted. We hope to get new grants coming in, but for the time being, we need to put them back into the general fund. You'll see that with fire as well. So it's a lot of the same people just being moved into different funding sources.
And where were we before the incentives? Were we at 2,000?
In 2006, you were 1,996 full-time bodies. In 2012, you were at 1,842. We dropped as low as, a little low, below 1,500, and that was unsustainable. I think our sweet spot is right about where we are now, maybe a few more bodies, and you'll see it in the demand in the fire department, and the police department especially. I don't know that we ever get to the other side of 1,600 again.
Councilmember Friedman?
Can you tell me about the hourlies, who they are and what they're doing?
It's all kinds of folks. It could very well be people that are working, that are technical professionals, that are working at the building planning counter. They may be working in public works in engineering. We have folks that work in clerical positions as well.
How many hours do they typically work a week?
Depends on the person. I mean, some of our seasonal people will work almost a full-time equivalency for a period of two years, or two months, and then fall away. Others may be 15, 20. Others may be full-time, and we end up paying benefits, but they're not salaried positions. So it kind of runs the gamut, depending on what they do.
Okay, because I understand seasonal people, you know, if our need is fluctuating, but I just hope that we're not hiring hourlies to get away from giving people benefits. You know, that's not something that I'm in favor of.
No, and I tell you, I don't think it really comes as a denigration to our full-time equivalent employees. It is those positions that will work hourly. Our ambulance operators right now are a group of hourly employees that, with any luck, will matriculate into full-time firefighter paramedics that reflect the community, and will continue to restock that farm system. But they are hourly today. But they work enough hours, those folks do that. Under healthcare reform, we have to offer them some type of medical insurance, and if they're working over 1,000 hours, they get enrolled into PERS. So it's a function of what they do and what department they do it for.
Mr. Grapetian?
Go ahead. Yes, I had a quick question. The additional position, community services and parks, where it indicates it's a One Glendale After-School Program?
Yes, sir.
Sports program? I mean, which school is it? What program is it? Or is it, or are we just saying we have enough money to hire somebody for an after-school program?
No, sir. This, it's a little more than that. As you know, we've been tremendously successful with the One Glendale program now, such that the, you recall when we had our joint meeting with the school district, we obtained their blessing to basically double the program. So we will do all elementary schools south of the 134 and Jefferson, out there on the west side. So we'll have eight schools instead of four where we do the program, and it's just a function of span of control. One supervisor can handle the four sites. We're going to double it, we need that other body.
Very good.
Mr. Grapetian?
Yes. I'm all for that. Glendale One program was a very successful program, and this is getting kids involved into recreational sports, which is a good thing to do. For next, or you may not have the answer today, but for next budget studies, when we, in 2006, when we had 2,000 employees, can we get a comparison as to what our budget was at that time, general fund budget versus our employee costs, or all of our employee costs as far as the salaries and the benefits, and as well as what is it today, our general budget?
Certainly.
Fund budget and our costs today. So we'll see the difference, the public will see the difference. So I think that would be a very good thing.
Yes. You'll see a little bit of that in the organizational profile.
I'll see, I'd like to see that.
We just haven't gone back that far.
All right.
But we do have it. In hindsight, we probably should have said this was program shifting and restoration, but...
Yeah.
Because the big chunk of it, as Scott mentioned, a large chunk of that is really existing staff coming back into the general fund for various reasons. Police officers with grants running out, we're bringing them back to the general fund. We're moving a paramedic from the EMS fund back to the general fund, and code enforcement from CDBG back to the general fund. So it was really, the bulk of that was really just shifting folks back to the general fund. 930,000 out of the 1,700, was shifting folks back. And then we had some other programs listed down at the bottom, and I believe these are all MOU-driven in terms of the Public Works Technician Certification.
The Public Works Project is actually very exciting, because I think we'll emulate this also in GWP. The idea is that it is skills-based, and so if you can demonstrate that, you can work a certain kind of tool, a chainsaw, or a backhoe, skip loader, and you do it as part of your normal job, then there's a small stipend that would go to you during those periods of time that you're actually doing that work. Well, the idea there is that if we have a more multifunctional employee, then we can do more in-house with the existing employees that we have for only a marginal increase. So this 149 is there as a placeholder. I don't know that, and especially in this first year, that everybody will qualify for every single certification that could possibly be realized, but if everybody took advantage of the full amount of that program, then you would see this cost. My guess is it'll be well lower than that amount. But again, ideally, we'll see this also in GWP.
The other side of the increases of the $2.5 million was the MNO, or Maintenance and Operations and Transfers, for a total of $833,000. Get the mouse to work. In Community Services and Parks, there's about $244,000. Again, nutritional meals, funding of that. Again, the One Glendale After-School Sports Program, the MNO involved with that. Fire is really the increased Verdugo Communications and a number of different equipment purchases for the fire department, and the emergency supplies for all the employees within the city. It's time to replace all our little earthquake kits, so that's budgeted in the fire department. And then just some miscellaneous changes in Public Works for the bridge repair cushions and traffic safety paint. So at the end of the day, the proposed 1617 general fund budget, again, is revenues of 193.7 million, with the appropriations of 194.9, with a budgeted deficit of 1.1 million as we had in the forecast.
So that's actually less than what was forecast last year, which is good, a reflection of increasingly stronger revenues, and then less cost than what we had projected a year ago today.
Then forecasting that into our fund balance, we factor in the potential deficit for next year, where the ending fund balance is 64.1 million. That's still 33.1%, which is still a healthy reserve relative to our neighboring cities. Again, the target is 35, with the floor of 30. And then just to show again our forecast, as we look at 1617, the 1.1 forecasted deficit, again, we move into the forecasted surplus, surpluses as we move out in the outer years. And as I said earlier, we update this frequently, so we don't, we always want to stay within our means, and that's the whole use of this tool, is if revenues start going up or down, we can reflect that in the expenditure side. So a very good tool. Took us a lot of years to get this finally put together with identifying our costs with the internal service fund, so I'm very happy to have this tool. With that, we'll go into the organizational profile.
So from here, what you'll see, just, you know, we kind of keep scoring, and no one bit of information tells you everything, but I think as a composite, it tells you kind of what we are as an organization. Population is increasing, but it's increasing faster than the size of the organization. When you look at the total number of bodies that we have, and I think that speaks to the value that we offer the community. You'll see what the revenue growth per capita coming up on that next, oh, here we go, on the next slide. You see where we are, property tax versus our neighbors, and to the extent that it's a 14% increase from beginning to end on this slide, it does start to underscore the limitations of our revenue structure. I mean, we are historically a bedroom community. The vast overwhelming majority of our usable land area is residential, which isn't turning over nearly as much as what you'll see in Burbank and Pasadena with much larger industrial and commercial bases, and they have a much higher property tax rate than we do. We're at 13.75 cents on the dollar. Burbank is at 19 cents on the dollar. Pasadena is at 22 cents on the dollar. LA City is well in excess of that. Again, significant growth, 27% over the timeframe that you see here in sales tax growth, speaking to the robustness of the market and the dynamism of our base. But again, it speaks to our useful land area. We have the Americana, we have the Galleria, we have the Boulevard of Cars, and not a whole lot of singular sales tax generators beyond that.
Is Burbank's big, is their sales tax so high because of IKEA?
That is a big chunk, but the Empire Center is amazing out there.
Our Empire Center. And a Costco.
Costco.
That's their biggest sales center.
That's part of the Empire Center, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right, across the...
Are these numbers including sales tax?
Yeah, that is...
Yeah, this is sales tax here. This is sales tax. And interestingly, utility user taxes, this is much flatter for basically everybody. And I think it speaks to something the council talks about, that as people learn to conserve more, and because this is driven on the revenues, it's a tax on the usage of the utilities. People are using less by conservation, especially on the water side, and you see those revenues, as I say, flatline and even decreasing, to the extent that it is, I want to say it's almost 5% decrease, again, per capita. So you're seeing the dynamic here of the revenue, or the population growing, and the flattening out of what is being generated.
Can I just stop you for one second? Looking at these per capita tax numbers, so it seems like per capita, we're the poorest of the three cities.
We are the biggest with the most restricted tax basis.
Therefore, per capita, poorest. So when they have more money than we do, Burbank seems to have, well, Pasadena has the most, does this translate into them providing more services? I mean, how does them having so much more money manifest itself?
It's interesting that...
Isn't that what matters?
No, I appreciate that question.
How long do you have?
I, I, I'm not talking out of school. We, I had a very interesting conversation with my opposite number in Pasadena, and I take, and Bob and his team should take a bow, they're watching our budget and understanding how our soft caps work and how our reductions have worked, because he's saying, "Wow, you guys are bigger than us, and we have 400 more employees than you do." Now, they do have a health department, but all things being equal, we're effectively the same organization, providing, this organization's providing the same services, yet they have been unable to cut what we have cut, and as a result, how have they been able to fund all these, their operations through fund balance? So where, you know, we fret over a 1 million, 1.1 million dollar use of fund balance, Steve across the hills will tell you that they took 60 million dollars and have whittled it down to about 20 million dollars, because they just haven't been able to reach those cuts. You have done that. You know, it wasn't easy, make no mistake. It certainly wasn't easy, but the council has said, "Live within your means. Fiscal responsibilities are number one priority." And you see it manifest here. We live within those means.
Yes, and you know what, as I think about it, I don't think Pasadena, I think Pasadena's economic discrepancy between the sort of the lowest income and the highest income is much wider than it is in Glendale. So you would think that the additional income would translate into sort of balancing things out, and, I mean, I don't know. All I know is that this is something that we should accentuate more. With so much less money per capita, we're doing, at the least, as much. Unless someone can point out that their services are better than ours.
I would submit to you, pound for pound, we're doing much more than anybody. That's not a slam on our neighbors. We're very respectful of them, but I think we have a justifiable pride in the service level we provide.
Okay, thank you.
When you look in terms of, okay, how does the organization overall, the full 800-million-dollar organization, how does it shake out as you look to 1617? We, a little bit more money going into public safety, and that's going to be reflected in some of the dynamics that Bob had been talking about, certainly. Public Works and utilities, the infrastructure investments that the council's been making, we still have a very robust investment in water, power, and as you know, sewer, and increasingly into streets and hardscapes. So you see that as roughly flat, where we're putting new money in, where we have already expended a good deal of the bond proceeds to complete the projects that the council wanted to get completed. You see that there is some increase in community development and transit. That'll be really, I think, a big function of that is going to be economic development. In terms of quality of life, the major jump there is your appropriation of development impact fees for parks. I think we have $12 million put in for parks alone in the coming year, based on the strategic plan adopted by the council. So overall, you're seeing, you know, a $3.4 million growth in the overall city budget, but there's, with the exception of the big blip on quality of life services, parks and recreation, everything else is relatively static. When you look at our operating costs, again, something that we've been very proud of, the number to take away here is at 33%. Our goal has been, the council's adopted goal is that personnel costs, all-in personnel costs, shall not exceed 35% of our overall operating costs. We've hovered around 33. I think at one year, we got to 34, and we've been able to drive that back down to 33. So we are very excited about that, and you see the employee count reflecting it. On the, going to Mr. Grapetian's earlier question, in terms of the general fund... Going to Mr. Garpetian's earlier question in terms of the general fund, in 1112, you see personnel, the same ratio, our goal is 75%. We're edging our way down to that ratio. The idea here is that we're not just making payroll in the general fund or in the total city budget, but that we're actually setting money aside for programs and operations and projects. In 1112, that ratio was 85%. So you were spending that much more money in the general fund on personnel. So you've been able to knock that number down and keep that number down over the term of the last five years. And then the final soft cap, you know that we, our goal is that not more than 25% of the personnel costs shall go to management. We're hovering at 17%. We are lean, almost to the point of being a little too lean where I know the internal auditors, myself, our chief operating officer, we start to worry about span of control, but we are holding strong at 17%. That's down from last year 19%. And we've broken out, just for your edification, the rest of the organization from supervisors, technical professionals and generals. So supervisors might be police sergeants, might be fire captains, might be working supervisors, lead workers, technical professional might be an engineer or an attorney who is working as a professional employee but isn't necessarily a manager, and then all the line employees that are there in the organization overall, the full 1579. Yes, sir.
So on slide 28, when it says personnel versus operating costs, 33%, but the management is about 17% of that 33%.
All in, right.
Okay. And I want to go back to slide 26, if you will, I want to see if I'm reading this right or not. Utilities users tax?
Yes, sir.
We are $142?
Per capita, yes.
Capital. Burbank is 193?
Yes, sir.
And Pasadena is 214?
Yes, sir.
So we are lower than everybody else?
Per capita, yes.
I mean, our neighboring cities.
Yes, the percentages are all relatively similar, 7% generally around there, but we have many more people and I think you're seeing less usage of the utilities.
I mean, per capita, that's what I'm going.
Yeah, pound for pound.
Because everything else is per capita, like their sales tax is $100 million more than us, as well as their property taxes is about $58 million more than us, $80 million more than us. But per capita, we're 142, Burbank is 193, and Pasadena is 214.
Yes, sir.
We are, okay, thank you.
So in conclusion, promised to wrap up in an hour and this first study session, I think we're actually on time for once. The big themes that you'll see with this budget, because it is a rather status quo budget, but the idea is that you fought hard to get here and you've made a series of tough choices and you have prioritized public safety. When you look at all the cuts that have been made, nobody, no department was immune from the cuts, but you worked very hard to protect the public safety departments and thus, as you are looking to restore some limited amount of funding, that funding would otherwise, that funding is basically going to streets and it's going to community services and parks and hopefully you'll also see a commitment there on remaking our code enforcement program. In terms of the programs, the infrastructure and the service, our goal, and really to Mr. Sananian's point, is that, you know, we have fought so hard to get here and we do so much with so little, truly, all the people in this room is led by the council, that it would be a shame to go back to what we used, try to remake what we used to have. This idea of structured improvisation at our staff, pushing decision-making authority, making good decisions, but pushing it down to the lowest possible level so that they are able to provide that level of exceptional customer service where we are empathetic and respectful, but understand at the same time that this is a business. And so to the extent that we try to field that best team, it's putting out the best employees to provide the best level of service at the best price and at the same time, recognize that quality and value are important to our customers just as they are important to the council. And then lastly, to the extent that there's always room for big ideas, for those moonshots that the council wants to chase, whether it's a cap over the freeway or pursuing and restructuring affordable housing in the state and in the city, nothing is beyond Glendale. It's an exciting time to be in Glendale and it must be an extraordinarily exciting time to be in your shoes as a policymaker. There's reasons for optimism and Glendale, as I say, is a place to be optimistic because, you know, those dreams really can become realities. I know it sounds a little hokey, but it's very, very true. So with that, Bob will just outline the upcoming calendar and then we will answer any question the council may have.
Wait, did you just say those dreams can become reality?
I did. And I'm wearing glasses, I'm very sensitive.
Just checking.
So today, we had obviously budget study session number one. Next week, we'll have the second session where we'll talk about council priorities, go through the total appropriations, the CAP, as well as our fee schedule and any changes, new fees, old fees, deleted fees, so on and so forth. The third study session, we'll have the department dashboard information and what happens if the UUT gets repealed, version of the budget for a review.
Will it be a full-blown alternative budget?
No, I don't think it'll be.
It will be kind of orders of magnitude because you would come back in July and immediately begin making those cuts, but you'll have a very good idea about where those cuts will come.
And as Scott mentioned earlier, we're aiming to have the hearing on the 24th and then adoption on the 14th. And with that, any questions or comments?
Thank you. Council members, any comments?
I have a question.
Sananian?
I'm sure it was in here and I probably missed it, but our Glendale water and power transfer to the general fund?
Yes, sir.
What's happening with that?
We have glided that down to 10%. You recall in 2012, it was 14.7% of operating revenues. You have systematically chipped away, reducing a quarter million dollars a year and driving that number down as the rates have increased, so they've met at 10% of operating revenues. We are locking in at that 10%. The total amount is 20.
Twenty, just over 20 million.
It's of electric revenues.
Of electric revenues only, not water revenues.
It was electric.
Right, only.
You went from, I think the takeaway is you went from 14.7% down to 10 and then the idea was lock in and float from there.
It's 21 million.
21?
21 million.
21 million?
Yeah.
So 21 million of the general fund comes from?
Yes, sir.
Electrical fees, okay.
The fourth largest revenue source today.
Okay, thank you.
Or 17 million on UUT.
After UUT.
Council member Najarian?
Thank you. Early on, we'd looked at some of the cost increases that we had and one of them was in the workers' compensation department. And I've been talking about a review of that and maybe developing a change in our policy. And I know it can be turned around. I've seen it at another agency that I've been in where just a change in the type of aggressive handling by attorneys lends itself to some cost savings and that. So I definitely would like staff to follow up on that.
Yes, sir. We have just concluded a request for qualifications or proposals for a TPA and so we will run a hybrid system based on suggestions from council that should hopefully impact in a positive way our workers' comp. So we churn through the cases as quickly as we can, get folks back to work and get them healthy.
Okay. And my other question is more of a general question, but I think it affects our analysis. And that is our population. I'm looking back at, let's go to slide 25, where it says our population in 2011 was 191,000. But previous to that, previous to the census, we were almost 210.
Yeah, we were 700.
So, you know, I just don't buy that. It's not reflected in what I see. It's not reflected in housing prices. It's not reflected in rents. So I think it's a grossly, regardless of what the census gave us, I think for us to work with that number grossly underestimates our actual population and I think it, you know, as we look at the per capita numbers, it certainly shows that we're doing a lot more with a lot less per capita than any one of these other cities. I mean, if someone asks me, what's our population, I'm telling them we're about 220,000 and I truly believe that we didn't have a dip of 19,000 people from 2010. You know, one morning census says, you know what, you're only 191,000. No way. I mean, no way. I don't think there's anyone in this city, in this room, that believes that that's what our population is. And I think if we, you know, we should have an asterisk by there and I think we should publish our own number that what we truly believe it to be, and I'm going to start at 220 for our own internal use. I really think so and we're growing and not to mention the new 4,000 units that are coming in, which may bring in, let's say, 10,000 more people. I think we need to really put that in perspective and realize we're doing a lot more per capita with what we've been, with what we have compared to our neighbors. So that's just my comment.
Just a comment on that, I don't disagree. It was 207, I think, before the census. These numbers are what the state gives us from the Department of Finance as our official population. Who knows what it really is at this point? I mean, we have to wait till the next census in 2020, I guess.
Mr. Najarian, how does that impact the budget study?
I think it highlights that when you work out the per capita figures.
We're even more efficient than.
We're even more efficient. We're doing much more with a lot less per person, per capita, than any of our other cities. So it really highlights the efficiencies that we've instituted and not just the, and when you talk about efficiencies, you mean hard work by the employees who are interacting with our residents to bring them those services and keep them at the same quality of life that they demand and that they've experienced before.
And considering too, Glendale's what, 30 square miles, Burbank's 16.7, so just the geographical area of what our services cover and we do it for less is significantly.
And not to mention Section 8 housing and other funding that is based on a population basis, so.
Well, I agree. I've never, I've always thought it's a joke, the number 191 is just not reflective of the reality. But of course, we are assuming that the same kind of under-reporting isn't happening with Burbank and Pasadena as well. And, I mean, we don't know. Maybe it is, maybe it's not.
Council member Garpetian?
Yes, I just had a question, just to follow up on what Council member Najarian was saying. Wouldn't it reflect on our water and power services if 10,000, 15,000 people just moved out of Glendale in two or three years or, you know, it should reflect on our services as well.
I think that what you'll see and what you did see during the recession is as Glendale was an expensive place to live, just by way of housing values and rent even, larger households perhaps shrank down, so you wouldn't see necessarily services being stopped, but maybe not as much usage, you know, because people are still living there, but you know, if I can't afford to live here, then I just pick up my family and if I'm living with other family, I move away because it is more expensive. And I think what you did see during the recession and even prior to the recession, interestingly enough, if you wanted to go buy property, you might be moving out to the north of Glendale or out to the far east in the inland empire. So you saw, maybe those people all came from somewhere. They obviously didn't all come from Glendale, but they did come from somewhere. So I think you'll see some of that, but I don't know that you'll see one singular blip on the GWP radar or on the Public Works radar for trash, sewer, anything, because somebody's still living in those units, just fewer people.
Yeah, but the issue is this, if 10,000 people moved out, it's just assuming that 10,000 people moved out and nobody moved in. It's a cycle. Some people move out, but others move in. So I think, point well taken, Mr.. I think it's a, it's a good, good point.
Thank you. Council member Friedman?
I think it's pretty well-known that all of the urban, most urban cities are under-reported in the census. I don't know why it would be different now than it was 10 years ago. I don't think it is, but what we do see if, when you start getting into the demographics is that we're an aging population. So what used to be a couple with three kids living in houses, now it's maybe just the couple or one person. And I, we see it in a lot of our residential neighborhoods, but certainly the census, when you go down into it, definitely bears that out. So if we've lost population, I would, I would, just taking a guess, given the baby boomers aging, that what we're losing are those younger people, a lot of them have grown up and gone off to college or moved out. So I think it's, it really follows the, you know, this demographic trend that we see, you know, certainly in our city.
Any other comments?
I'd like to, thank you, Ms. Friedman. I want to thank staff, the audience can't see, but the room is full of staff that had a hand in this initial report and so I want to thank all of them and Mr. Elliott. Even though the report is positive, I think we have to remain diligent in the way we spend and money that we allocate for different projects. I think that the consensus here seems to be that we're doing more with less and I also think that that's a compliment to our staff because I know that a lot of them are doing a lot more work than they have in the past and I just want them to know that we all appreciate it and I know that that is a big contribution to the quality of life and the services that we provide here in the city. So with that, do we have a motion to note and file or?
So move.
The report?
Second. And do I need, I don't, I need a vote?
Move to adjourn?
Oh, okay. Move to adjourn. No vote necessary? Okay, do I have a?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Do we need a?